I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. May I please have a motion to certify closed sessions?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge of Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved in second at any discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Next is the roll. Ms. Sosa, will you take attendance, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Onby.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. And I'd just like to let everyone know that Mrs. Taylor was unable to join us this evening but sends her regards. Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Mrs. Young, can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second at any discussion. Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here. Yes.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'd like to begin this evening by offering congratulations to the PTSZ at Matoka Elementary School and Jamestown High School for being named the 2018 through 2020 National PTA Schools of Excellence. The honor is bestowed upon schools for their commitment in identifying and implementing action plans that support the PTA's national standard for family-school partnerships. Those standards include welcoming all families to the school community, communicating effectively, supporting student success, speaking up for every child, sharing power, and collaborating with the community. As National PTA Schools of Excellence, Matoka and Jamestown will each receive a banner for the school as well as other celebratory materials. It's hard to believe, but the first day of school is less than a month away. For families who are new to the area, I'd like to say welcome and encourage you to register your child as soon as possible. You can stop by your neighborhood school this week, Monday through Thursday, or beginning next week. Registration will be available Monday through Friday. All WJCC parents should mark their calendars for the upcoming school open house events. High schools will welcome families Tuesday, August 28th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Middle schools will host students and parents Wednesday, August 29th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And elementary families are invited to open house on Thursday, August 30th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And this evening also, I'd like to remind parents that school supply lists are available now on our school websites. Even if you missed the tax-free weekend, it's not too late to get back to school bargains. Parents will want to keep a copy of the supply list very handy. And Madam Chair, there's one more announcement this morning. This is Dr. Kathy Worley's first official meeting as the new Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership. And we'd like to welcome and congratulate you, Dr. Worley, on your new position. Dr. Worley has the privilege of presenting on her first evening before the board, so we look forward to that later. That's all of the announcements for this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? Okay. Dr. Heron, the open houses, if I was on the website earlier today and couldn't find them, and just now, just kind of quick search, so maybe we could get those on the website so everybody could, that would be great.
Absolutely. I'm sure it'll happen even as we speak.
All right. If there's nothing else, that brings us to citizens' comments, and I think we have three speaker parts. Thank you. Ms. Hummel, would you like to read the rules?
Yes. This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker parts are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Onby.
Sandra Curran. Thank you.
Before I get started, I believe that we gave some things to be scanned in. I'm not sure if you all, late, it was the very last moment, so I'm not sure if you were able to receive that at this point or not, so...
I'll scan it and send it tomorrow.
I understand. Thank you. I misunderstood when you were doing that. My glasses, that would be very important. Madam Chair, thank you very much for your time this evening. We're here to speak to you tonight as concerned parents of War Hill High School students. On July 31st, Lafayette High School held a ribbon-cutting ceremony for their new auxiliary gymnasium, and Jamestown High School added a second gym six years ago. War Hill High School, with the largest enrollment in our district, has but one gym. One gym for 22 junior varsity and varsity teams. One gym for roughly 250 students to use during seven PE classes on any given day. In your 2018-2023 Strategic Five-Year Plan, under the section entitled "Educational Equity," you state to provide equitable opportunities for success as a goal for this board regarding WJCC students. WJCC Central Office reported the following enrollment figures to the state in 2017-2018. Lafayette had 1,135 students, Jamestown had 1,329 students, and War Hill had 1,377 students. We hope you'll agree these numbers, and the lack of a second gym at War Hill High School does not reflect equitability. I believe we can all agree that our high school athletes are students first and athletes second. As a parent of athletes, I can attest to the fact that the lack of adequate gym space can and does impact our students' learning. During inclement weather and when sports seasons overlap, it's not unheard of for athletes to get home from practice at 9:00 p.m. or later. Our coaches are always striving to strike a balance between academics and their team's success. It is our hope that you're willing to partner with us to achieve that balance as well. We believed you when you stated in the 2013-2018 strategic plan that you wanted to create a climate where students are fully supported. Our PE teachers are some of the best in the district. They're tasked with teaching specific standards and skills that the students must then be tested on while often sharing the one gymnasium with another class. That can mean 70-plus students moving, collaborating, and hopefully learning material and skills in one gym. The alternative being to hold class in the hallway, which they often must do when safety allows. Unfortunately, PE class may be the only opportunity some of our students will ever get to be introduced to a healthy activity which can lead to a healthier lifestyle, and they're not being given a real chance to learn in this overcrowded environment. In conclusion, in March of 2018, the Valbrun Consulting Group submitted a report to this board noting many bright spots and wanderings within the WJCC school division.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Would you please submit your remarks or email them to the clerk so we can have them in their entirety, please?
I would be glad. Can I may I just give it to you now, ma'am?
Absolutely.
It doesn't want to stop.
I timed myself so many times at home and I knew what was going to be...
Yeah, we can. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, thank you.
And our second speaker is Ms. Stacy Cotrell.
Yes. Are you good, Ms. Sosa, or do you need?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm Stacy Cotrell. My presentation was geared to a PowerPoint, so I'm just going to hold it up as I speak so you guys can kind of see what I'm talking about, and this will be given to you, I guess, tomorrow through a scan. I'm vice president of the War Hill Boosters Club and mother of two student athletes. And the highlight of this first slide is that War Hill has 1,400 students, approximately 1,400 students, and Lafayette has under 1,200. War Hill has one gym that totals 13,392 square feet, and Lafayette now has two gyms of 18,350 square feet. This is a 5,000-square-foot difference with the smaller enrollment school having more space. This next slide is a picture that kind of depicts War Hill on a day of inclement weather or a very hot day like today where everybody has to move inside. And what it shows is we have volleyball, JV, it's hard for you guys to see, but JV, cheerleading, football, field hockey, all our sports are here in the building. And in some cases, we have pillars of concrete that's very close to our athletes. Our next slide is the wrestling room that I'm now understanding may be changed back to classroom space because that's what it was. So War Hill's wrestling room is small and inadequate for the program that has 20-plus wrestlers. Only four out of the nine rings that are possible for our wrestling mats are here and makes practices go longer and more difficult for instruction. We have some other inadequate spaces that we wanted to talk to you about. War Hill has no cardio room, and this is, and we have very little equipment compared to Lafayette and the other high school. We'd like to work with you to make, to fix this. The weight room is small and cannot accommodate many of our athletic teams in PE classes. The floor also has some crumbling issues, and the work order has been put in for this repair. It's crumbling in quite a few spaces. So we're calling this War Hill's auxiliary gym at the present moment. It has padding, and there is places where our students do their athletic activities, wrestling and weightlifting occur some in this hallway. The next slide is, I did a little bit of research, and your plans that you already have for your original War Hill High School that was built 10 years ago has an auxiliary gym that's already designed. And this is a little picture of it, and you'll be able to see it better tomorrow, but it has the auxiliary gym, and it also has two storage rooms. Already designed, infrastructure's there. You've got your cooling tower, your chillers, your boilers. All these type of things are here and ready to go. So the thing that really needs to happen is the other three sides of roof and a floor.
Thank you, Ms. Cotrell.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Lisa Rochard.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Rochard. I'm the president of the War Hill Booster Club. And as you can see from our presentation this evening, there's an inequality which we feel is our responsibility to bring to the attention of the school board administrators. In order to have adequate classroom space and keep our extracurricular sports programs growing, a solution must be found to decompress both the educational space and the extracurricular athletic space at War Hill High School. This has become a significant issue and will only intensify as the students' counts continue to increase along with the population in upper James City County. Health and physical education classes introduce healthy activity to our students, and in some cases, it may be the only introduction a student receives. Extracurricular activities include sports, including sports, are essential to providing positive alternative options for spending afternoons, evenings, and weekends in a world that we increasingly become, that is increasingly becoming full of many negative options for our teenage population. In addition, extracurricular activities provide opportunities for personal growth, learning how to deal with others, learning how to accept defeat, and learning how to formulate personal plans to achieve success are just a few. It's essential we provide children with opportunities to make them better human beings. It's unfortunate that the capital planning process does not include a means by which to have already placed the War Hill Auxiliary Gymnasium project on the capital improvement list, but hopefully, the attention we plan to bring to this project will allow for it to find consideration and funding in the very near future. We believe that our case for the auxiliary gymnasium is compelling, and hopefully you also agree. We appreciate your time and attention to this presentation. We will be at the meeting August 21st as well. But I also, as a parent of three kids that went through War Hill High School, I have a third one there as a freshman right now, I have two students that have gone four years without an auxiliary gym. I've had students that I pick up at 11:00 o'clock at night from athletic practices. I have students that I've taken at 7:00 o'clock in the morning for athletic practices. So I've lived it, and I probably won't see an auxiliary gym in the timeframe that my last son will be there for three years, but I will continue wanting it for the long-term athletics for War Hill High School.
Thank you, Ms. Rochard. Okay, all right. That brings us to proposed agenda items for our next meeting. The first is Special Education Advisory Committee bylaws, and because this is coming directly from an advisory committee to this board through the policy committee, I will toss it to the policy committee.
I'll, I'll take this one. So we've met, the policy committee met a couple times on the bylaws, and just to give you some background, the CAC bylaws don't have to be approved by the school board, but it is good practice or best practice for these bylaws, when they are changed, to run through our review and the attorney's review to make sure that they are totally in sync with our own policies. So that's, that's why we, we brought the bylaws up to be revised after receiving a request by the CAC committee. So if we could look at the, the red line document, is that, let me see, the second one on our list here, you can just see what was changed. So on line 65, they actually, well, actually, let me see, line 63, they put in the parentheses what policy they should be following for appointment to membership. All of this, I think, was a desire by CAC to, to know where to look for these policies, because before, some of the policies, it was unclear. So they would have to go to several different places, and so these changes are basically just giving direction and pointing that subcommittee to the appropriate policy that's referenced. So anyway, on line 63, we have the reference to policy BCF, section B4, and then under term of service, it's just clarifying on line 67 that the term of service is going to be in accordance with school board policy, BCF. And then we crossed out on, or they, and by the way, Stacy Haney, I think, was the one that reviewed this, and we got all of her, her suggestions, and, and based on her suggestions, we made some of these changes. On line 82, because the public school liaison serves as the secretary, we removed that from the sentences under chair and vice chair. And then they wanted to have a meeting that was scheduled in May so that they would be able to meet and plan their agendas for their school year. So that was...
Julie, just one, the secretary, in line 135, you added it in down there.
Yeah, we added it down there, sorry. Yeah, just to clarify. We removed it from under the chair and vice chair because it didn't apply, and then we re-added it under duties below.
Right.
Thanks for clarifying that. And then, under the nomination and election section, we talked about on line 93, just clarifying that any member nominated must be eligible to serve the full term. So you can read that from line 92 to 96. And then they clarified what happens if a vice chair position becomes vacant. That's 97 through 99. And then you scroll down past the duties. None of those changed except we added a section called staff duties and said the public school's liaison will serve as a secretary, and then kept the duties the same. Lines 152 and 153 are the lawyers recommend, recommended changes. And 179 was just saying that they should follow Robert Rules of Order and then pointed them to the correct policy on there. And then the same thing for the voting, referencing policy BCF. All of these were just pointing them to the policy in WJCC for how to handle voting. Let me see. Lisa, was there anything you, that I left out that you wanted to add? Just to make it clear on line 87, 88, 89, the, the point of that change was to move their voting of their officers from January to May. That's a change. And then their officers would have an opportunity to plan through the summer.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, questions for Julie or Lisa?
You started off with the bylaws not to be approved by the school board?
Yes. The bylaws evidently of the CAC subcommittee do not have to be approved.
Not legally, but it's recommended by the attorney that we, that we, yeah, best practice.
So for our other committees, do they have to be approved by us?
Dr. Heron?
Yes, I believe the school board approved the bylaws for its advisory committees when they were set up in 2015. That's when they were written by our attorney for the board.
Right.
And so they haven't come, there haven't been any changes in the other bylaws, so they still stand approved from 2015.
I just don't understand why we don't have to, why we don't have to approve the CAC bylaws, but we have to approve the rest of them.
It's recommended that we do, which is why it's, we have to, we don't have to, we don't have to approve any bylaws by law.
Okay.
But the attorney recommends that we do so that they're compliant with our policies. And so that's why, and CAC has requested these changes, which is why they're before us for action at the next meeting.
But we, but we, we could. I mean, we, that could be part of our practices that we approve committee bylaws.
That's the attorney's recommendation. Yeah, that's, that's...
Not that it's of best practice, but we could actually make that decision at some point where, where the board decides it's going to approve.
Well, hopefully, we'll take that action at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. I had, I, I had a question or two about letter D, line 192?
192.
Right. Who determines, or how is that determined? A member will recuse himself. Who determines that? And the other one related to that, I know, because I was the board liaison member on, on that committee for a couple of years, and I realize that there, the vast majority of members of that committee have children, or have had children, who are in special education. So I'm looking at the word personal, and I'm wondering how, if you're, if you're dealing with issues that relate to special education, and you have a child who's in special ed, it's almost like, how can...
Well, I was looking at it, when I was looking at that, I was looking at like, let's say you're talking about a particular policy that directly impacts your child, and it that directly impacts your child, and you should recuse yourself. But just because...
But you don't know. I mean, it, it could be something related to a particular category. It could be, I don't know, I'm just saying. That's the thing that struck me, is does the person take it on themselves to decide, oh yeah, okay, I'm going to recuse myself?
Dr. Beers, the conversation that, that CAC had in the, in the meetings that I...
I'm sorry, what?
So I wanted to share with you the conversation that CAC members had who brought this forward. So I attended the CAC meetings where this was discussed. The intent really behind this is to ensure that a provider of services, that was really the intent at this, would not vote on something that would impact them financially. So CAC members...
That's not the language in here.
Well, that's the way it reads...
A member, but a member may not provide any services at all and still have a conflict.
The intent is that there could be members on CAC who are also providers of services. And so they looked at CAC bylaws across the state as well as nationally, and so there has been a trend to try to ensure that providers of services are not situating themselves or, or ingratiating themselves with a CAC so that they might benefit in some way.
Maybe you should remove some of that language, then. Maybe personal shouldn't be in there.
This is the language that the attorney recommended.
And she never, that never came up?
No.
Except for the fact that if it doesn't say specifically provider of service, that member, I mean, that, you know, if I had a child that had specific issues, and I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't specify, I think it should say benefit, a member who is a provider of service to students, because that does not specify that. And if I had a child, I can think of a lot of instances where anything that came up, I probably wouldn't be voting, because I would have to recuse myself, because I would have a personal conflict if, if none of the others apply.
Would it help if Ms. Sosa just quickly, between now and the next meeting, runs it by the attorney again?
I am... Or just try to explain, or, let us understand what his or her interpretation is of the word personal. Because I understand the financial, and I understand the official interest. It's the personal. And I, you know, I've used, so if I had an LD child, and I didn't like one of the proposals that were coming up that affected LD kids, am I supposed to accuse myself?
That's not...
Yeah, so if you could ask about the personal specifically and whether that should stand, or whether, you know, whether attorney would recommend striking that and get that information to us if possible between now and the next meeting, and if not, we'll just... But I do think it's of note that in this, with any conflict of interest situation, it's up to the individual member to recuse themselves. So whether it's the CAC or city council or school board or any other official capacity, it requires the individual to recognize the conflict and recuse themselves. So it's, when you're serving the public, it takes that level of understanding to, to recuse yourself if you need to.
So my, my question would be, what, since CAC is an advisory committee to the board, what matter or transaction would they undertake that would benefit a particular member? Because they, everything has to come through the board and the administration anyway. So I'm not sure exactly what that transaction would be that would create the conflict that they would have to recuse themselves for, because it's just an advisory, not just, but I mean, it's an advisory committee and it doesn't actually spend money or implement programs.
That's a good point, but I think it's also conflict or, more importantly, appearance of conflict, right? So...
And I think that's why, I mean, it wasn't in here at all, and I, before, and I think the whole point of putting it in here, putting it in here is to bring it to the forefront of, we don't want people on this committee that are on the committee for a financial reason only. reason only. That's not the type of people that we want, serving on the committee.
I mean, one of the other things that I think, since this is, since this has been run by the lawyers, and this is going to be in terms of best practice, I think we're on thin ice right there. So...
Personal?
Well, that whole section, I think, because, I mean, if we're going to adopt this as, we're going to support this as the school board, and we don't have to, I'd like that language cleaned up and be very specific, so that we have a, so whoever is going to apply for positions on there has an understanding, and of...
So, it references Policy BCF Section B7. Is that verbiage in that policy?
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, so it might be, I mean, and at the end of the day, these are bylaws for an advisory committee that we essentially bless. So these are not our bylaws, they're their bylaws. And if they want to set a standard to behave in this manner, so I think that's the question, whether we bless these bylaws, or adopt these, or, you know, or approve these bylaws. They're not our bylaws, they're their bylaws. So I think that's important to remember, and that they worked on them, and that the policy committee worked on them, and that our attorney worked on them. So...
Is it our committee or their committee?
It is definitely our advisory committee.
Okay, I just want that clarified.
You are, yep.
Are we looking at Policy BCF B7? Has anyone been able to bring that up?
Yes, I've got it.
Okay. Is it, does it, does it have that kind of verbiage?
Dr. Murphy, do you have the, the policy up?
I don't have it.
Okay.
It should be in, like, the red, and it doesn't go anywhere. So I have to go into the policy.
Talks about voting, secret ballots not being allowed, and that in any case where a member has a personal interest in a particular vote of the advisory committee, such members shall recuse themselves and shall not vote on that matter.
But that policy uses the word "personal."
And that's our policy.
And that's our policy?
Policy.
So is everybody okay with just asking Janet to run that by the attorney one more time to get clarification?
And then we can always bring up Policy BCF Section B7 for review, if it's something we're not comfortable with.
So that, this is a proposed agenda item. So the idea would be to discuss it tonight and put it up for action at the next meeting. If the board's not comfortable with that, we can certainly take it off that trajectory, and, and discuss it again at another work session, or at the next meeting. Or we can have Ms. Sersa check with the attorney, and, and then get an answer for us and put it on for action. It's up to this board what you want to do.
There a timeline that has to be associated with this? Because it has to, they're trying to change from January to May, so it's, as long as we get, that's kind of the big deal. So as long as we get it done before that, we're good, right?
Be nice to have this done as soon as possible.
Right.
As soon as possible. We spent all last year working on it.
Well, because it impacts also the, the fall, because right now, they're set to elect leadership in the fall, right?
In January.
Oh, in January, sorry, sorry. So, so as long as we get it done.
I just think that, that the, the term "personal" is so ambiguous, and it could mean anything.
But that's already in our existing language.
The other two things, I think, are very legitimate, whether there's a, there's a financial interest, and, and/or official. Because my assumption is that official and financial probably would go together, but maybe not, maybe not. I, it's like, what's, official interest is, oh, I get the financial. Official, in your capacity as an official? Maybe that's what that means, in that you could, you could actually, oh, I don't know, influence, I don't, I don't really know, I don't even want to go with that one. I'm more concerned about the "personal."
I'm wondering if we couldn't just say, use the exact verbiage that's in Policy BCF Section B7, the exact verbiage, and then, that's it.
And you think that would take care of that?
Well, that would, well, it still has "personal" in it. So then, what, I mean, because really, the, the problem that this board is bringing up right now is a problem in the policy that this, these bylaws are referencing.
That's right.
Yeah. And I'm not sure it's a problem, because I think...
So, you're right, I'm raising it as an issue.
You're raising it as an issue, and it's already a policy, so...
And it may mean, I don't know which comes first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, which one? What I don't, I don't want, I, I have a problem supporting this with that language in there, even if it's still in, you know, in the other policy. And I don't, I don't want to approve that, and then somewhere down the line, we, we change that other one, and I have to go back and change that one as well. I get the other question I, I have. Is this the only committee, our only, our own, the only committee that has bylaws as specific?
Ms., Dr. Herron, we want to answer that again, please.
Yeah, basically, this, all committees of the school board have bylaws, and they were written by the attorney for the board's subcommittees and approved by the board in 2015, when those committees were established. And, and so, but this is...
So it wasn't...
This is one of the first to come back and say, we'd like to have some changes in our bylaws to help us make, make us more functional.
Well, because I've looked at the other ones, and, and what has, I would like to see uniformly across all, all the committees, in terms of the bylaws, because they're, they operate pretty much the same. I know we don't have to do that now, but that's never been, it's never been raised. What do we always talk about? We always say, okay, we've got to approve our, oh God, what is, what are they called? Our operating, our...
Undered operating procedures, SOBs.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, yeah. We do that every year. But we don't review any of, you know, we don't review that. It's, I suppose that it's sort of sasseined under that, I'm just...
Well, what if we made D, a member will recuse himself based on conflict of interest policies noted in BCF Section B7? So it doesn't actually, I'm just like, or either not have it, I mean, the whole point of this is to make it clear for people, so that they don't need to have Section B7 in front of them the whole time. I mean, that's the, that was the, the reasoning for it. So they were trying to make it match an existing policy?
By all means, if you think I'm totally out of line, reason that as an issue, then...
Well, would you feel more comfortable if we ran it past the lawyer, and get whatever the lawyer...
I'm not, see, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, and I, I have a lot of faith in attorneys, my, my son's an attorney. But I think "personal" is really, I just think that's a real tricky one, and they, and I, I don't know if there've been, you know, case, and maybe that, maybe that's the thing to ask Tracy, is, is see, see what hap, you know, I, I just don't know. But I just think, it just struck me, I can't help it, it struck me when it, Stacy, I don't mean Tracy, Stacy.
So, right, Julie, if, if I could just suggest, why don't we go ahead and put it on the next agenda? In the meantime, ask Ms. Haney for feedback, based on feedback that we get prior to the meeting, that Ms. Sersa can post on board docs. And if at that time, we're not ready to take action, we can just not have a motion.
Okay.
But let's just see if we can get that clarification.
So you're putting it on as an action by the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I am. Okay, thank you. Is everybody ready to move on to authorization to permit city and county use of school buses? Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring to you a request for City of Williamsburg and James City County to use our transportation, and Mr. Snipes is here to present the item this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Herron. As Dr. Herron said, each year at this time, we bring before you this proposed agenda item for authorization of the city and the county to use our school bus. This policy aligns with BBA, Policy BBA, School Board Policy BBA. State Code advises that the school board of any school division may enter into agreements with governing body of any county, city, or town in the school division. The costs associated with this school bus, the school bus are paid by the appropriate governing body, and do not, and do not accrue to the school division. So, the proposed agenda item tonight is for the superintendent to recommend that the school board authorize the superintendent, or the superintendent's designee to approve requests from the City of Williamsburg or James City County for the use of school buses through September 30th of 2019.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Snipes?
Does any other, any other locality ever ask us for, to use our buses besides, these are the only two?
We, we typically don't get requests from other localities, because they'll use their, they'll use their local school buses like yours. But James City County Parks and Rec usually are the ones that use our school buses during the summer to transport kids back and forth.
That would be, yeah.
So that's what they're used for, is the county recs department uses them for...
They use them, they just went on a swim, swimming the other day, and they use the bus. And they, they provide the bus driver, because their Parks and Recs, the person who supervises Parks and Rec can drive the bus.
So it's kind of an irregular use, right? It's kind of, kind of an irregular use.
It is irregular, it is really irregular.
So, you say that the individual governing bodies pay, pay for the use of the bus, I understand that. So how is maintenance figured into that?
Maintenance is figured in just with the rental fee, or the fee that we charge them.
Okay. Expensive.
Anything else? Okay, we'll look at this for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. The next item is the fiscal year 2020 budget calendar. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Barnes is here to present a proposed budget calendar for the year 2019-2020, and will present it in detail this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, other board members, and Dr. Herron. Yes, it's that time of year again. Let's see, in your board packet, there is a copy of the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year 2020, for your review. And this evening, I'll just highlight a few of the important dates and processes, to ensure that it, it meets the division's needs. So, October the 2nd will be the initial presentation of the Capital Improvement Development Committee's recommendations. As you may know, we have created the Long Range Master Plan Committee, and the CIP Committee will incorporate the recommendations from this committee into its recommendations for the CIP budget for the next 10 years. Then on October the 16th, we'll hold a public hearing, so that we may receive opinions from the public, and, about the committee's recommendations. So on November the 13th, after you've heard the committee's recommendations and the public's comments, we'll ask you to prioritize the projects that have been presented, and, in preparation of the generation for the 10-year CIP plan. November 27th, we'll conduct another public hearing to gather additional opinions and recommendations. And we'll continue with our historic process of approving the CIP budget separately from the operating budget. So, on December the 11th, that's the date we've chosen to ask you for your approval. Then in January, we're going to move forward to begin to formulate the superintendent's 2020 budget, operating budget. And we're changing this process a little bit this year, from what we've done in the past. Typically, we've had, you know, a budget work session, and we've given you a lot of information, and during that work session, we've asked you to prioritize. This year, we're actually planning on splitting this into two sessions, so that the first session, we can give you the general assemblies, well, actually, the governor's budget, which will come out in mid-December. And then, we'll also discuss what, what we understand will be the projected revenue from our funding partners, and we'll look at the initiatives that have come, come through to Dr. Herron. And then, the second meeting, we'll have another work session, and you'll be able to ask questions, of course, in between that time, and be able to make a more informed decision when you prioritize the initiatives. So the first one that we're expecting to have is January the 8th on our calendar. I just need to mention, though, that you'll notice the dates are a little different, because you, as a board, you'll typically meet the first and third Tuesdays of, of the month. Well, January 1st, New Year's Day, happens to be that first Tuesday. So, we've taken the liberty of shifting them to the 2nd and 4th Tuesdays.
Right, that's a good idea.
And this way, it gives you two weeks in between the two sessions as well. So, let's see, we're, we're proposing those work sessions to be from 4:00 to 6:00 before the, the school board meeting. So, a month later, about a month later, on February the 19th, we're going to present the superintendent's proposed operating budget. And then in March, we'll request and hopefully conduct a joint meeting with the county Board of Supervisors and city council, as we've done in the past. So also in March, on March 5th, we'll hold another public hearing to gauge the, the public's opinion on the superintendent's budget. And then the next session, let's see, March the 19th, we'll ask you for your approval on that budget, that we'll pass on to the city and the county. So we've also included a tentative date of March the 26th, in case there are any open issues that need to be resolved before we pass the budget on to our, our funding partners. And approval at this meeting will still meet our April the 1st deadline. So, and we'll give our funding partners enough time to make that decision. So we've set the final adoption date as May the 21st, and there's still time, at that point even, to make final changes. So if needed, after receiving the final numbers from the city and county, should additional changes need to be made, we've also set up a tentative date, tentative meeting for May the 28th. So, I'm happy to entertain any questions and/or comments.
Sure, the, the January meetings, we usually meet the first and the 3rd.
Yes, sir.
So, 8th and the 15th, because we're out, we're get out, get away from city council and the supervisors. So, 2nd and 4th, is that really what we do? Or should we meet 2nd and 3rd? You know what I'm saying? That's more of a Janet and us question. And then the other thing is too, is the January 8th meeting is generally our organizational meeting, and there's not a whole lot on the agenda for that. And that just might be kind of awkward to do that before the organizational meeting, in the first week, first meeting in January.
Oh, right, that's a good point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just, I just think we've got to kind of think about that a little bit.
But we won't be in conflict, because next year is the, we're in the city, right? So that, so the Tuesday night conflict, in terms of space, isn't, won't be an issue, or shouldn't be. I mean, I'm okay, I mean, I guess we could go and do the organizational meeting earlier, and then, and then conduct the work session, you know, with that leadership, and then go back into a meeting, if that's more comfortable. Or you could just do the work session under old leadership, and then just move into it. But I think...
I would just not, I, I would say not work it here, just think about it and figure out what we think the best thing to do would be. Because maybe we have a meeting on the 2nd, and to do the, of January, to do our organization, and then just go into it on the, that's for somebody else to decide. I mean, that's kind of, I just, I just think the, the meeting before the, before the organizational meeting's kind of awkward. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not adverse to not having the Saturday thing, and doing the, doing the 4:00 to 6:00, so I think that's, that's fine. It does put us against a little time crunch, as opposed to a Saturday morning, we can go as long as we want, but we can see. go as long as we want, but we can see.
Anyone else?
Ms. Barnes, once the calendar is approved, will this be made available on the website?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. My pleasure.
Sorry. So I, I really appreciate the inclusion of the tentative meetings. I like having those just as a backup in case the board finds itself in a difficult situation. We never know, we never know whether it's going to be a good budget year or a bad budget year.
We do have a new governor, and it's his first full budget season, so.
Right. And then also, and I say this every year, but if, as part of this, it's not our work, so it shouldn't be in this calendar, but one of the things that I hope that staff will continue to do is keep us abreast of the two localities and their processes as, as we go through ours, so that we can, so. And then I also hope that in, kind of in response to the communication audit that we had, and, and also keeping in mind that we did hear from some citizens tonight about items that, you know, are relevant for this, for a CIP budget, and there may be other citizens out there who have ideas that we should be aware of, that we do a really good job of promoting the public hearings, both operational and CIP, so that people who are out in the community know that, A, we want to hear from them, and, you know, and that be the best way to, to, to provide that input so that the CIP is a true reflection of the community's needs.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? All right, we'll, we'll put it on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. The next item is the 2017-2018 Innovation Evaluation Report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the second year of our Innovation Evaluation Report, and Dr. Worley is going to introduce it this evening, and then we're also delighted to welcome Dr. Hofer from William College of William and Mary, who will be presenting most of the evaluation report this evening. Dr. Worley, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Thank you for having us here tonight. As Dr. Heron shared, Dr. Hofer will be collaborating with me on the presentation this evening, and I do want to also thank Dr. Johnson for her assistance, and she is actually under the weather with laryngitis, so she's unable to present with us this evening. Here's my clicker. All right, so the funding in 2015 began being provided to schools throughout Virginia from the Virginia Assembly. And one of the quotes that was stated about the funding that began was that this purpose was to provide bold innovative programs aimed at building workforce for our 21st century. So, in WJCC, we took advantage of this funding, and we began to design our own innovative courses for our school system. So looking at that, courses in WJCC are designed to facilitate personal connections between students and learning. And lessons are student-centered, personal and meaningful, and provide relevant opportunities for students to engage. So as you can see, some of the things that we focused on were mastery of content and skills for our students. We wanted our students to be able to apply their learning. We also wanted it to be personalized, and we wanted them to have very authentic opportunities where they could connect students and learning together, and also connect with their community. And one of the things is, as the teachers were collaborating and planning their curriculum and designing their curriculum, we made it purposeful, that we designed it with the five Cs in mind, which also support the Virginia profile of a graduate, and we really like to emphasize our creativity, our collaboration, our communication, critical thinking, and citizenship. The next couple of slides, I'm going to highlight some of the work that we did at the individual high schools this year. First, starting with Concourse 9 at Jamestown High School. This course focused on project-based learning and enables students to participate in continuous collaboration while exploring connections between art, biology, English, history, and speech. One of the highlighted projects for the group of students was Water, Water Everywhere, where they were able to study water chemistry, how water impacted civilizations and origin stories. And they took water samples at various locations and created clay vessels, which they also had on display during Community Night. The monies that they raised when they sold the clay vessels funded a Thirst Project, and many of the people in the room were able to participate in that and purchase the vessels. And actually, $25 goes to provide clean, safe drinking water for one person for life in some of the countries that, each year, the Thirst Project takes on a country to support this. Next, we'll talk about Link 5, which was at Lafayette High School. And at Lafayette, through an integrated approach, students earn credits in English 9, World History II, Biology, Computer Information Systems, and Art Foundations, while building a foundation for leadership and entrepreneurial skills. Some of the highlights we saw at Lafayette this year were the three things that you see on the slide here. The first was their magazine, Movers and Shakers, and students engaged in research on historical figures, and they showcased it through their, the magazine, Movers and Shakers. One of their other projects was Beyond Water, where they explored current issues with water in society today, developing guiding questions for research, analyzing data, and represented research results through infographic and a Sway presentation. They also sold self-made water fountains to raise money for charity. One thing I wanted to bring out through this is you can see how the cross-content collaboration between schools took place, because with our partnership with William and Mary, they were able to collaborate together, and we had a water project in one school and a water project in another school, because there was lots of continuous dialogue between the teachers during our planning. They also had the Link 5 Marketplace, where students created a project proposal based on the results from a school-community survey to determine current needs at Lafayette, and they developed business goals, budgets, marketing strategies, and products with a driving purpose to raise money for the Link 5 Scholarship Fund. And finally, at War Hill High School, I wanted to make sure I noted that War Hill is actually a year ahead in the process with this. They are in the second year of implementation, where Lafayette and Jamestown were in the first year of implementation. And, sorry, the Pathways Project this year, they ran four courses, Biology by Design, Geography by Design, Humanities by Design, and Physics by Design, and 9th and 10th graders participated in these courses. One of their highlights this year was the New Garden Project. The school received donations from Lowe's and a grant from Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District, and it funded the creation of a community garden, which they actually ended up putting on War Hill campus, near the campus. And students worked with Williamsburg Community Growers and Ship to collect produce for their cafeteria. Some other highlights is, as they were planning this, the multipurpose, they were planning for a multipurpose farm to community garden, and students also explored how to actually plant. And one of the teachers, it was shared with me today, that some students had never actually even planted a plant before. So, just having that experience. And also, they had lessons about environmental issues, including water conservation. I'm going to turn the next part over to my friend and colleague, Dr. Hofer, so he can talk about the results of the study.
Thank you, Dr. Worley, Dr. Heron, Madam Chair, and School Board members. My pleasure to report to you on the second year of this evaluation finding on behalf of a team of researchers from William and Mary, for faculty members and for doctoral students. So, I hope I'm able to sort of consolidate and boil down the 22-page document or something you probably all have in front of you, and hopefully answer your questions as well. We started the presentation last year with the same slide, this may, may look familiar. I just, when I was over here, I just Googled the, the latest update. The numbers look very similar, so this is back from 2015. The findings from 2017 published are very similar. And what we're looking at is the level of student engagement. This is a national survey from the Gallup Poll, and we can see that it precipitously drops off after 5th grade. So this, these are questions like, over the past week, I learned something interesting in school, I was able to do something that, that I'm good at in school, I was able to build skills that transfer beyond school. So we can see in high school nationally, this is, this is a major concern, a major problem. So, that was the impetus, one of the big impetus for these projects was to, to try to find ways to reengage students. So, and when we're thinking about engagement, there's a lot of different ways to conceptualize that or consider that. It's not necessarily kids are having fun. That's one thing that, our students might think of it that way, but engagement takes many different forms. And one of the things that we started in the planning, and the teachers really operationalized in their work, was focusing on three different pillars of motivation that leads to engagement. So one, all the teachers in, throughout all those classes and projects, they tried to build an opportunity for students to have some choice, choice within constraints, so that they were all learning what they needed to learn, but they had opportunities to choose different roles in projects, different ways to present their findings and so forth. So that's autonomy. As Dr. Worley said, big focus on content skill, content and skills, so building mastery of those skills, and then to feel connected with their peers as well as their teachers. When you have those three ingredients, you've got a recipe for a higher level of engagement than you would otherwise have. So, what we tried to do, and again, I'm going to go through this quickly, so please either interrupt or at the end, come back with questions. But what we did to try to get a snapshot of, of the level of engagement across all three schools and these three very different programs, was to do a very widely-used self-report instrument, a survey. Our plan was to actually do a baseline survey in, early in the fall semester, and due to very big difficulties getting returned consent forms back, we weren't able to do that. So then we were thinking, well, when do we do it? So what we decided to do is we wanted to let the courses run for a while to have the teachers and students get, build some comfort. So we actually did the surveys in January and February of, of this year. So, you know, early in the second semester. So it gives us a snapshot, so that's one limitation of the survey. It's one day, one time, depending on the project that they were in the middle of, that could have influenced survey. But it does give us a snapshot, a profile of students and their level of engagement. The other thing that's important about this data compared to last year is we were able to survey students that were not involved in one of these innovation projects. So we were able to elicit survey responses from students at Jamestown, Lafayette, and War Hill that were just part of the traditional academic program, to see any comparisons. And that'll raise some interesting points later on. We tried to see what patterns we saw in terms of profiles about how kids engaged in school. So we looked at their behavioral engagement, to what degree did they follow directions, do what they needed to do, get work turned in on time, all those kinds of more compliance-oriented forms of engagement. Their emotional engagement, how interested they were, how excited they were about the projects they were doing or the experiences they were having. And then the level of cognitive engagement is not just their learning, but also their learning how to learn, their self-regulation, managing their time, organizing themselves. Those are the cognitive components as well. So we did this last year for Pathways Year 1, and now this year, we've got students from all three schools plus students in the traditional program from all the schools. So we've got just under 400 students represented in this chart. The fascinating thing is that this, this, this view actually looks pretty similar to what we saw with Pathways, which is encouraging in a lot of ways. The, the largest group of students fit into what we would call the achievers profile, and these are kids that are engaged across all three of those dimensions. So behavioral, emotional, and cognitive. That's really exciting to see that number of students engaged all three of those elements. Then the second highest level was participants. So between those two, it's 275 out of about the 400, and participants, they're the ones that are going to be engaged behaviorally and cognitively, but maybe are less engaged emotionally. But still, those are really good predictors and good determinants for what we see. And then we see the kids that are actively disengaged in all three components are what we termed as the resistors. That was six, six students. That's pretty remarkable. And if we overlay the findings from the original chart, in terms of the means, this is a seven-point scale, that's about where the national average is. So if we, if we could take one thing away from the student engagement, not just in the innovation programs, but in the traditional programs at the three schools, is the level of engagement of the students is significantly higher than around the country. So that's a really exciting component of this, I think. When we look at, when we separate it out by school, now again, this is still going to be the students in innovation programs and students from the, the control group or the traditional program. One thing that's tricky with this chart is it's a seven-point scale, so these are mean scores. So at the top is 6.5, and at the bottom is 3.5. So if we were to layer, again, that national average, it would be below the, the chart on, on the screen here. So again, we see really high levels of engagement across all three schools, especially in terms of their behavioral and cognitive engagement. Yes, Ms. Young?
I just have a question about how students are identified as achievers, participants, doors. I'd like that information.
Great question, yeah, great question. So, for each of these dimensions, there are multiple survey questions, and what we deter, is we looked at the mean scores, let me think how to say this. So say there's 10 questions that deal with the behavioral engagement. You look at the mean scores for each student for their, all 10 of those questions, and then for each of those three components. And then we saw where the clusters, where they grouped, so that there was a, a large number of students that had high mean scores across all three dimensions, so then we clustered them and called them one group.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that make sense? I know it's, it's complicated to unpack before that helps.
So it's, these are self-reporting studies?
Yes, yes. Yeah, last year, we were able to, no, it's a great, great point. Last year, we were able to couple it with observational data as well by expanding it to the three schools and the students not in the, you know, in the traditional program, that was just not feasible. Yeah, so, yeah, that's, but it's a great point.
And the national average, are the Gallup, the Gallup Poll?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Which is also self-reported.
Exactly, yes, yep. And it's very similar, it's not the exact same instrument, but they're very similar kinds of questions, and they're both very valid and reliable instruments, so I think we can be pretty confident about that. Again, we see well above the national average here, these are the three different schools, we'll dig down just a little bit deeper. If we look at, these charts represent, on the left-hand side of each chart, is the innovation program students, and the right-hand side are the students in the traditional program. Now, this had us scratching our heads a little bit. We see at Jamestown, the behavioral, there's a statistically significant difference between the students in the innovation programs versus the traditional program across all three dimensions there. That's the pattern you typically see. Where in Lafayette, it was basically very similar between the innovation program and the traditional program. And War Hill, actually, some of the means were, although not statistically significant differences, they were a little bit higher for the traditional program. And that had us scratching our heads a little bit. And I don't have great, you know, reasons or rationale for why that might be, other than, again, it's a snapshot in time, depends on the group, you know, that they're engaged, or the project that they're engaged in and so forth. But that was a bit of a head-scratcher. But if we take a step back and think about what does this mean for the division, again, we, what we want to look at is those overall means are considerably higher, and it's great to think that even in our traditional programs where we haven't emphasized some of these kinds of skills and opportunities, that students are still very engaged. So, but we will unpack a little bit about what the kids in the innovation programs did take away. Yes?
Is there any, there's probably not any way to gauge this, but I'm, I'm wondering if there's any way to gauge that, for example, at War Hill, if the students that chose Pathways are, are at that level, but if they didn't have that choice, and maybe they...
That's an excellent question.
They wouldn't be.
That's a great question. It's possible that we're comparing apples to oranges. The, the profile of students in Pathways might be different than the general population or the population of students that can return the consent forms. Yeah, there's a lot of variables, that's something that, we could dig deeper into the data, we didn't have all that demographic information, but, but yeah, it's, it's a really good question, it's a really good question. One of the things that was interesting, so Pathways is the only program that we have two years of data for. And so this is, so the blue represents the freshmen last year, and then the orange is there as sophomores, how they respond to the same instrument. So what we see there is a little bit higher, especially in the behavioral, a little bit higher means cognitive dip just slightly. But what we were encouraged with this is the novelty's worn off, those engagement scores though really remained high and persisted with those students. And honestly, and this is great, it's important to look at engagement, that's, I think, a very, you know, something that we want to track and keep our eye on. But honestly, what really jumped out to us is we talked with the students, as we observed in the program, is the experiences they had. That's where I think we start to see some differences. So, we did a qualitative study with the Pathways students for the year two, because we wanted to follow them, again, from where they started to where they are in year two. We'd like to do the same thing where these courses run next year at the other schools as well. But one of the things we looked at was their students, their career exploration component, their identity about what they wanted to do beyond school, their, their level of civic engagement, and then as Dr. Worley introduced at the beginning, is how they're operationalizing those five Cs, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, et cetera. So, a few things popped out. So we did focus group interviews, individual interviews with a number of students in Pathways Year 2, and we had them think back across their two years, this is towards the end of the school year. The two projects that really were most impactful for them were the Letters to the Governor Project in their freshman year. This is where they researched an issue that was relevant to a current campaign, and they wrote a, actually, they created a video evidence-based argument for a position that they took related to that issue, that they submitted it to local government officials. That was something... That was something that was, they said was very impactful because they felt like they had the opportunity to have a voice and, and influence their local community. The second one was the Community Garden Project, which we just saw a slide of earlier in their English and Biology course in year two. And the students, the, they talked about how empowered they felt, again, to make a difference in their community. They were out, they got a chance to, at their first exhibition, they created proposals for what they wanted to do with the garden, both in terms of what they wanted to grow, how they were going to manage the water and pests, how they were going to create an educational component, so different groups did different things. And they presented not just to community members, not just to parents and, and other students from Pathways One came to that presentation, but also the Williamsburg community growers. So they had knowledgeable adults to give them feedback on their proposals. And they said that that was really a valuable experience because they had to bring their A-game to be able to communicate what they were going to propose. So that was something really beneficial. We saw evidence over, and this isn't just Pathways, this is more anecdotal now, but as we observed, students at the three high schools, they were engaged regularly in those five C kind of work in really meaningful ways. So students really valued those experiences and they were able, you'll see this in the report, we don't have time to go through it. I pulled out a few quotes, but they were able to articulate at the end of their sophomore year, the, the lasting lessons that they'll take away from these experiences. Now, that's not necessarily going to be captured in a survey. But when you sit and talk with them, when you go to one of these innovation showcases, it, it's pretty remarkable, the experiences they have. I'll just point out a couple of things. These are all in the report. You can read them at your, at your leisure. But one of the things that they talked a lot about, and this is related to that cognitive engagement, is they learned a lot about themselves and the way that they can be successful in school. Those are the kinds of skills that are critical, not just for their time in school, in high school, but whatever they choose to do beyond high school. This, I think, was one of the most powerful things because for many of them, there was a deep connection to what they were doing. It wasn't just that it was academically interesting to them or challenging. But in relation to the Community Garden, a student said that, you know, "We see that the efforts of a few can shape entire communities by means of cooperation, dedication and spirited compassion that binds us students together like glue in pursuit of one goal, to make the world a better place." That's pretty remarkable to hear from a sophomore. This was just eliciting their thoughts at the end of the year. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, so definitely see a lot of great evidence, and you, you can see some more things. But they, they reference those kinds of skills that would transfer. And they were able to articulate ways that those skills might transfer. To wrap up and then any questions that you have. These were the four objectives at the, the very first High School Innovation Planning Grant, to provide students with personalized learning opportunities, engage students in inquiry and project-based learning, create a relevant student-centered approach to learning, and to develop community workforce readiness through applied learning programs, internships. We're still, you know, that's a little bit down the road. But at all three schools, they had opportunities to engage with the larger community. And that was something that was really impactful and meaningful for them. And so, you know, just a few recommendations that the students told us over and over and over again. And you would hear this when they would present at the community nights, was that they really desired meaningful schoolwork, something that had value beyond just what they were doing in their classroom, that they were going to have an audience for that work beyond their teacher or even just their peers in the classroom. So we heard that over and over again. And students value opportunities where they have some voice and choice in how they learn. One of the interesting things about the Community Garden Project was students applied for a job. So there were different roles that they could have in terms of that garden. And they actually had to write a resume and do a job interview. And they immediately saw how that was relevant, a relevant experience that would translate beyond school. So those are the kinds of things that we could see opportunities to embed, not just in these innovation courses and programs, but also in the traditional courses. And we're starting to see evidence of how that, that training is, is kind of bleeding into other courses, one with other teachers in the schools. And then finally, oh, I guess we, I guess we truncated this in terms of time. One other thing that, recommendation that we'd have sort of at a higher level is the, especially for these collaborative, where teachers were working together. It was a really, hats off to the teachers, especially at Jamestown and Lafayette, with the five teachers that were working together as part of these courses. That is a Herculean effort to do that, especially when there wasn't a lot of shared planning time. We saw evidence of the teachers planning across schools and being able to share ideas. So just investing in that time and opportunity for, for teachers to collaborate, for teachers to think creatively and to critically solve problems as they arise, that's something we would recommend as, as something going forward. That's Dr. Beers.
Did the, do the teachers or, or even the students, does it suggest to you that they actually need more time?
Yes.
That in terms of how the day is organized and structured? If we're going to be really successful at doing something like this?
Absolutely.
That we have to, that paradigm?
Yep.
We need to look at that.
Yeah, and Dr. Worley, if you want to jump in on any of these things, because yeah, that definitely, the, the logistics of that are difficult. You know, and oftentimes, teachers are doing it after school or before school, or, you know, and that's, that's not ideal.
Well, what's interesting, I, I, I've, I've talked to a couple of students. And you know what my background is? I'm all about text and reading and books and, and one of the things that came out, a couple of things came out, but one of the things that they talked about is they, they really, you know, liked using the technology. But what they, some, from them it said, it actually took us more time to go from this link to that link to this other link when they found that it might actually have been easier and less time-consuming if they'd just gone to a text that was dealing with that. So I'm interested in your thoughts, because I know it's not just the students that are raising that, the parents are raising that as well. And, and I certainly don't want to see books disappear.
Yeah, absolutely. It, it's such an interesting, it's a challenge. Because the benefits of that blended learning approach is, and the kids talked about this, they liked that flexibility to be able to work kind of at their own pace and, and at home or at school or on the bus, you know, coming back from a, a track meet or whatever. But they also said, boy, there's always more to do. And so, yeah, there was definitely a component of that that they were thinking about. And, you know, and I, I think one thing is, we're all, the teachers and the students are all feeling their way a little bit. You know, these are all pilot programs, pilot initiatives, that we, we had a debrief session with a number of the teachers across the three schools, as well as some middle school teachers that, that did some initial project-based learning planning this year. And just to raise, like, what, what are the lessons we've learned? And so now, our idea now is to kind of look across those cases. Yeah, because you're right, that's, that's a, there's a benefit, but there's a drawback to that.
Books are still
Absolutely.
Useful.
Absolutely.
I, I appreciate you, the, the evaluation, the report and, and, you know, I think we're fully committed to the Pathways learning. The one thing that I, I took from, from your report that I, that really struck me was writing for a real purpose gave students the motivation to engage in their literacy learning. So that they, they, instead of just, you know, writing a paper when they're writing for a purpose, it really, it, it really helps, helps them to strike a chord and get that, get that learning done. So I thought that was really a, a good quote that I had in the paper, in that evaluation.
Having visited all three programs and spending time in the classroom, I, first of all, I just want to commend this program and recommend it to parents because what I observed when I, not only with the nights they presented, but the time spent in the classroom is, I, I did see engagement. And, you know, I've, being a teacher, that's always the number one thing you're looking for, for kids to be engaged, or else they're not going to learn. And for high school students to be that engaged was absolutely amazing. And I appreciate this program and just want to say I'm all for it.
I just wanted to comment, I think the best part of the report are the student comments. And, and like Mrs. Young, when I had an opportunity to attend some of the community events and spoke with students, they were clearly engaged. And I know my own high school student who did not participate in the program at Lafayette because she was too old to participate in it, talks about the, the desire to have projects and learning experiences, dig deeper and not just be surface level. And so I think that, that definitely has echoed here. And, and so as much as we can do that with a blended learning, that's, that will help us as we strive to, to meet the challenges with the portrait of a graduate. So I, I love the student comments. I think that truly is the best part.
Dr. Worley, I, I would like to, I've got, I, I, I think Mark was going to turn to you. I, that question I was asking him about, the time and, and the effort and the teachers having to be really, truly engaged as well. Do you have some thoughts on that, just based on what's we've got so far?
I mean, teachers are desiring more time, obviously, to collaborate anytime they can get it. But one of the neat things about this is, as you were talking about the students being, you know, on fire and it's contagious, the same thing is happening with the teachers. And we see them naturally doing some of this on their own, not necessarily in a class that's set aside, but maybe an English and a, and a history teacher. But absolutely, we're working as we can with our principals and in the buildings to provide our teachers with as much opportunity to collaborate as possible.
Just following up on that, I do hope as we consider budgets in the future that we can provide, you know, resources to teachers so that they do have time to plan together and collaborate, whether that's, you know, with the community at large or with each other. I mean, that's such an important part of, of making this work come to life. Just sort of two questions, maybe comments. One thing, it's not the scope of this study. I thought the report was wonderful, I enjoyed reading it. And I had a student who benefited from the program and really enjoyed being a part of it. But one of the things I was curious about when I was reading it is, I wonder what teachers who then get kids who were in this program think of those kids. Are they going to, are they going to say, that's a concourse non kid, that's a Pathways kid? You know, I'm curious if you, if, if that's ever been studied in projects like this, or if you're familiar with that kind of?
That's a great question. Not, not any literature I'm familiar with, but it's a great question. Especially when they, they're introduced to these skills early on in their high school experience, how does that operationalize over time? Because I think honestly, one of the benefits that these students are going to take with them is just all that organization and time management. The, the logistical challenges for the teachers are one thing, but it's also for the students. They're balancing multiple projects at one time. They, they've got a lot of demands on them and just beyond school as well, and after-school activities and so forth. Those kinds of experiences are going to prepare them for AP courses, where they've really got to move fast and really be on top of things, or for courses where they're going to go out and do an internship. So those are kinds of, so I think that it'd be interesting to see, that, it's a great question. I'll take that back to our research team to think about, well, how might we look at that? Because you're right, and I do, I think that's an important point to make too. I think with these innovation programs, these are all pilot efforts so far. So everybody's new to this. This is new to the teachers and it's new to the students, especially the interdisciplinary in high school. That's unusual. So there's a learning curve involved with this. I think where we see the real payoff is going to be a few years down the road.
Because within that school, there might be a broader community impact based on what those kids are modeling and what other, oh, I want to, I want to be like that. So, so that was kind of my one comment or question. But then also, I think it's important for us to remember the connection, engagement's great, but does engagement leave to, lead to achievement? And so I was, for the public that's viewing, could you talk about that for a second? Because at the end of the day, we want students to achieve.
Yeah, I mean, that's data that we actually don't have. So I, I can't speak to that. I don't know.
Here, but more broadly.
Oh, you mean, oh, you mean like sort of?
In general.
Yeah, okay. Well, I can tell you this. There's, there's a large-scale national study on deeper learning. So that's really what we've been working on here is, because it's not just about projects, but it's about embedding those skills of self-regulation, organization, social, emotional, like a lot of those different things. And what we see for those where they did paired samples of, of high school students in deeper learning schools versus like more traditional typical schools, they, they perform better on, you know, like standardized tests, whether it's statewide or the PISA international tests. They, they go to four-year colleges at a higher rate, they graduate on time at a higher rate. Just about every measure you can think of. I mean, they're, they're, it's national studies, so I mean, it's, can operationalize differently at a local level. But I think we see that that's, it's not ju, and it, it's, it's those education outcomes, but it's also those life outcomes. So, so yeah, I, I think that it's, we're in seeing increasing amount of literature about that. That wasn't a component of this particular study, but yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to remind everybody what kind of why we were doing this in the first place, because it's about student achievement. Dr. Heron's laughing at me. Anything else?
I just wanted to thank once again the collaboration of the School of Ed with our school system.
We're delighted, Dr. Heron and Dr. Worley, just that, it's, it's a wonderful, very symbiotic relationship. And we, we hope to continue whatever innovation means in the coming years. Thank you.
That brings us to the next discussion item, which is the NSBA Annual Conference Attendance. This is a question that Mrs. Young brought up at the last meeting, I believe. Just to kind of just talk about our ability to attend. During the last budget, we had, because it was a tight, difficult budget, we had restricted how many members of this board could attend that conference because of the cost associated with it. But I think we all, it's in, you know, our SOP and it, I think we all recognize the value of these conferences, both NSBA and VSB. And so I, I personally think that, and we do have enough money in the budget this year, that everybody who wants to attend NSBA should be able to. But Mrs. Young, I don't know if that's what you were?
That was my question, because we had, we had restricted the number of people that could attend the NSBA in San Antonio because of budget restrictions. But I would, you know, I thought we should revisit it and talk about whether or not we wanted to possibly decide whether or not it would be appropriate for us all to go to Philadelphia this year. It's closer too. We don't have to fly, or we could fly, but it's not far.
Is everybody okay with that? You okay with that, Mrs. Young?
I'm very happy with that. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll proceed in that direction. All right, that brings us to action items. The first is personnel item, personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions presented this evening.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Approval of personnel actions has been, a motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Serza, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to 8.02, approval of the minutes from July 10th, 2018. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the July 10th, 2018 meeting.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to 8.03, Authorization of Signatures in Absence of the Superintendent. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize Mrs. Monique Barnes, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Scott Thorpe, Assistant Superintendent, and Dr. Kathy Worley, Assistant Superintendent, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence of the superintendent through August 15, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Sorry. Okay, that brings us to 8.04, Tuition Rates for Non-Resident Students for the 2018-2019 School Year. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve tuition rates for non-resident students for the 2018 to 2019 school year in the amounts of $10,281 for basic regular education and $18,478 for basic special education.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can you call the roll, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. That brings us to 8.05, Revised Policy BBB, Appointment and Election of School Board Members. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I've moved that we revise policy BBB, appointment and election of school board members.
You can have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Will you call the roll, Ms. Serza, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to Board Member Comments. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything to share with us today?
Uh, not exactly. I mean, the, as, from this point forward, the synergy of the school system starting is getting underway with teachers getting prepared and students getting prepared. So I just wish everybody a happy end of the summer and look forward to seeing them in September.
Thank you. How about you, Mrs. Young?
I, I guess I ditto that remark. It's, it's, school summer is winding down. I, I saw that when, oh, I see some sad faces. I did see a lot of people out shopping this weekend for school, so we know it is coming. But one of the, the things that I've had the opportunity of attending this past week was the summer school graduation. And I want to congratulate those, those students who participated. And I want to congratulate those, those students who participated and commend the school division for providing for that. I know parents were grateful for that and pleased. And I enjoyed being there, and even though the ceremony was short, we had three students that graduated. And it was very touching and I appreciate that.
Dr. Beers?
I just would rea- I, I'd say the same thing, and that is that although I wasn't able to attend, I think having a summer graduation ceremony is very important for students. And, and I, I'm glad that we do that. And I think it's really good, and that's all I have to say, really.
Ms. Hummel?
I just wanted to say that I had a great time this week going to the Lafayette High School Auxiliary Gym, ribbon cutting. It was a really fun event and it was great seeing all the representatives from the athletic teams participating, as well as acknowledgement of the efforts of the volunteers of Lafayette High School in getting the auxiliary gym kind of brought to the forefront of the attention of the school board and our funding agencies. And so when I see the War Hill parents coming tonight, it, it just makes me think, this is, it is important for our, our parents to be involved in their school system and to, to be a voice and an advocate for their children in their schools, so just.
Ms. Onby?
Yes, had an opportunity to attend the Equity Summer Institute a couple of weeks ago, I guess. So it was interesting to hear folks across the state address issues of equity and was pleased to hear the new state superintendent talk about student engagement and how localities will begin to measure that. Wanted to give a hats off to the division and Mr. Ott Stott for hosting the football safety clinic. So that was great to see that reported in the local newspaper. And I do always enjoy attending events like the summer graduation ceremony and auxiliary gym. Like that's, that's the best part of being a school board member, is to have an opportunity to see our students and be at a community events. And wanted to thank several SEAC members who came tonight to listen. They've now left, but they were here to, to support the adoption of their bylaw changes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so I, the Lafayette gym opening was fun. I enjoyed particularly watching, I believe, Mr. Kelly and Dr. Heron shooting hoops. So I don't know, did you shoot any hoops, Ms. Hummel, or?
I did not.
No. Such a shame.
Bottom chair, I scored.
I'm sorry.
I did too.
Yeah. Excellent.
You're a little taller.
And since our last meeting, we had the James Blair Tour, right? Is that right? So no one mentioned that. So that was fun and exciting and school's coming along. So can't wait to, to see that one on, uh, opening day, so. Anything else? Dr. Heron, do you have anything else to add? Okay. That brings us to upcoming events, the first of which is the Policy Committee